I'd like to call the February 6, 2018, City Council Meeting to Order. We don't have a city clerk to call the roll. Where should you go?
We'll have to call the clerk to order.
Yes. We could have our IT guy call the roll.
Somebody grabbing minutes. Can't the city attorney do that? Go ahead.
Are we recording?
I believe they are, yes. So here comes Melanie. There she's coming.
Yeah, job security.
For you, Mike.
Madam City Clerk, we await your roll call. Present.
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 Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pam Stewart.
Present.
Councilmember Ramiro Valderrama.
Present.
Councilmember Ritchie, would you please let us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have approval of the agenda, so we're able to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Then seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda has been approved 7-0.
Mayor Malchow. One item I did want to bring up is I wanted to report back to you on the status and the progress related to traffic.
Great.
And its study and concurrency issues. Staff has held several working sessions with individual council members to further discuss and bring forward our understanding of the relationships between the Transportation Master Plan Program and the traffic management concurrency issues. We will be coming back to the council for discussion on February 13, study session, which will be next Tuesday, so I want to give you a status update.
Great, thank you so much. Next, we will have public comment, and I want to alert those that are present, there are two public hearings tonight. If you are here for either one of those public hearings, if you'll please wait and make your comment during the public hearing, otherwise, your comment will not become a part of that record. So this would be for comment other than those two public hearings. So this is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three minutes limit per person, or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM the end of Business Day to the city clerk, melanieanderson@smamish.us. Please be aware that council meetings are videotaped and are available to the public. Our city clerk is grabbing our sign-up sheet here. Okay, first up, I have Elizabeth Ryan. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Elizabeth Ryan. I live at 1635 West Beaver Lake Drive, Southeast. I'm here because I want to talk about, just a second, I want to talk about the Stormwater Code amendments. They have become a really personal issue for me. In August 2016, I found out my dad had terminal lung cancer and was given three months to three years to live. Knowing that my mother was going to be a widow, I immediately began pursuing getting an addition for a house or looking for a house where we could take care of her. When my dad passed away in June 2017, we had not found a suitable home, and so we had to pursue the addition. So we immediately applied for permits, and our project was only 1,108 square feet of new impervious surface area, but we are within the critical drainage area near Beaver Lake. And so we are restricted by the codes of 13.20.040 for critical drainage areas. Now, I understand that Issaquah, Redmond, Bellevue, and unincorporated King County all have exceptions to the core requirements, but Smamish does not. So our small project that's under 2,000 square feet is having to be held to this really restrictive code and making it very difficult. So we have now been in the permit process for almost seven months. This has added significant financial costs, as well as left my mom in transition after losing her husband. And I have to ask, how much is the environment actually benefiting in our small project from these restrictive codes, especially as I see these huge massive housing developments that are being built in Smamish? So I would ask that you please consider approving an amendment to the code that would allow for an exemption for projects under 2,000 square feet of new impervious surface area in the critical drainage areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have James Eastman.
James Eastman, own vacant parcels along 196th Avenue Northeast. Been up here quite a bit before. Here today, I'm going to talk about the new tree code. It's exciting. I'd like to see actual incentives tied to this tree code. For instance, I own probably half my property is undevelopable, never be touched, and I have a lot of trees, and I could take on probably a few thousand more trees. But due to all the other restrictions in the city, there's really no incentive to try to reforest the land. As, for example, if I have my 10-acre parcel and I have a house in the middle that was built 50 years ago, and I want to do a remodel or an expansion, the new stormwater code says anything over 500 square feet requires a drainage study, over 1,000 square feet requires direct tight line down at the parkway. Well, that's what we were just trying to do in subdividing, but that's not allowed in the disturbance zone, so you can't afford to pay to acquire all the land necessary to tightline down to the bottom. So now you're stuck, unable to subdivide on your 10-acre parcel in the middle of a forest. And in all these forest meetings, we've talked about how trees offer this awesome stormwater benefit and how they offset all this stormwater, and it's like, I'm in 10 acres that is never going to be tou-- you know, 5 acres is never going to be touched, but I can't build more than a 500-square-foot footprint, you know? How come I'm not getting any credit for all these trees I have? So I'd like to see that going forward is when we come up with these new codes, that we actually try to incentivize the urban forest stewardship and also consider that in your stormwater code. Does it make any sense to have somebody on 10 acres in a forest sit their house on the very edge of the property line and have it three stories with a 500-square-foot footprint and no driveway? So I just hope that we look at these codes and do codes that actually make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman. Next, I have Mary Wichter.
Hello, my name is Mary Wichter, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish. And I emailed you a PowerPoint last week on February 1, including a red-green map from Bellevue, a red-green-yellow map from Mercer Island, and then the soils beneath that. And then this map doesn't print in color very well, so I'm going to talk from a smaller version today. I want to talk, Bellevue has an infiltration potential map, and what it does is it says red is really where it's not feasible for infiltration, and that would be places like coal mines, landfills, 50 feet of major utility corridors where community public water supply or private wells are, slopes of 25% or greater, just not 40, mapped landslide hazards, shallow groundwater, and anywhere within buffers. And on the next two pages, and I gave councils a copy of this today, this is, Bellevue lists their requirements here, and then Mercer Island, who did a lot of development in the 50s or 60s and 70s, they've had a 500-square-foot limit since the 1990s, and they have detention standards. And they don't want you doing lid or infiltration by erosion, landslide hazard areas within setbacks where soils aren't suitable, where places are related to the height of the slope, within five feet of property lines, bird utilities where groundwater is really shallow, or underground storage tanks, streams, wetlands and their buffers, drinking water supplies or wells, or if there are septic tanks or drain fields. Now Mercer Island doesn't have any septic, Bellevue has about 1,200. I think our city has between 6,000 to 7,000 of them. And you can't put water in where there's contaminated sites, obviously, like the situation Issaquah is having, and in groundwater protection area or critical aquifer recharge or care areas, and you've heard recently from the water districts directly from them for their concerns. So the last map is probably the most important, and I printed it in a smaller size because the large size just doesn't have the same colors, as you can see. The small size, you'll see steep slopes, 40% or more are hot pink, the landslide areas are green, the erosion hazard areas are oranges-yellow, and then there's a 50-foot setback from those, which is also yellow. And then wherever those aren't, if it's blue, it's shallow groundwater. So those are all places that other cities have said it's not really appropriate to use lid, which is low-impact development, it should be infeasible, or it should just not be permitted. And since the other cities have been doing it, I would like to have the city of Smamish look at that. So how that would impact the landowners, if they're in one of those areas, they don't have to go through the drilling, boring, ripping the land apart to figure out that they don't have to do lid because you've already showed that generally. And then if anybody wants to do more or less, they can hire their own geotech, but I think that would really help people out. So I gave that information to you again on February 1, and you have the short packet today, and you have the maps online.
Deputy Mayor.
I would like to ask the city manager to actually look at this, but what I'd like to know is if this was before or after the most recent update from Department of Ecology that says you can't say it's infeasible, basically, is what I, what my understanding is. Or you can't say it's infeasible because of economics, for sure. But recently, there was a change in lid and requirements and the whole MPDES, right?
Correct. There is an updated standard for MPDES permits, and we will look into that, because it looks like this is, for example, Bellevue's dated 2016.
Right, that's what I'd like to better understand, if this is okay now, or if it was, if it's kind of outdated, so.
Yep, we'll check with that.
But it's interesting information, yes.
I do believe it's what's currently used, but that's good to check. Mary, if you have an extra copy, I think I'm, I don't have a copy up here. Oh, thank you. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, next, I have Vince Mandello.
Good evening, my name is Vince Mandello. I live at 19720 Northeast 32nd Place, Smamish, and I also am president of the Eagle Shores Homeowners Association. I have a question regards to the city as that we identified some water being illegally routed onto our property. Why did the city not work with the county to address this issue that was mainly known as a drainage problem regarding wetland 32C and marked onto our parcel? We provided photographs and information, all of this. The city ignored warning from Heather Marlowe from the county regarding addressing the drainage issue and admitted in both the Orgon and the Brannwald, I think I'm pronouncing that properly, properties, in both cases, that they were allowing to build. They were aware, meaning the, excuse me, they were aware of the culvert underneath East Lake Smamish, but it was not repaired or replaced when we informed the officials several years ago. And the water was scatteredly routed to the edge of our property that encompasses Eagle Shores uplands, onto our property line. And with the culvert not being addressed, it has caused damage to the Eagle Shores homeowners' property extensively. I have a letter dated September, this goes back to September 28, 2015, when Heather Marlowe sent a letter addressing it to me, that the King County Parks Division has worked with the city of Smamish to investigate a solution to the problem, but it has not been addressed. And I think we've been more than patient, waiting two and a half, almost three years for this to be addressed. And my fundamental question is, why did not the city and the state get together and correct this problem? I have photographic evidence I'd also like to provide that progresses over the several years. I also had a King County trail worker, Kevin Workman, tell me that if I did not accept the water being routed onto my land, that my access would be cut off. Well, extensively, that has now occurred. We no longer have nuclear access because it is completely flooded out after a culvert that the city said they knew about, but ignored to work with the state in terms of correcting it. And so I'd like to submit these documents and have this issue addressed. Again, myself and members of the homeowners association have been more than patient with this. This does also impact the culvert case that the state of Washington is being sued over that needs to be addressed, and it is causing economic, excuse me, ecological damage by letting the houses being built to the south of this property. Thank you for your attention, and if you have any questions.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mandillo, will you actually give those documents to our city clerk over here? And Mr. City Manager, can I get you to follow up with Mr. Mandillo, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Valderrama, did you have a question?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add to that later today, we'll be talking about that state suit as well, and the culverts, in addition to it. I'd appreciate if the council was copied on the response to the homeowners association. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, I have Aurora Purcell.
Yes, my name is Aurora Purcell. I also, I live at 19720 Northeast 32nd Place, and I have attended several of the hearing examiner's meetings in regards to the building along, in the conservancy zone. What I am, I was told was, as I have fought each and every one, and I have been at every one of the last four homes which have been approved and allowed the building in the last of the conservancy zone, that even as has land size that is allowable for a home to be built, has granted every single home the variance for zoning, as well as a shoreline variance, and setbacks for every single thing that they have asked, regardless of the environment. The next parcel that is up is the Paul parcel, and the other parcels that I have fought against, one was the Augram parcel, which was tax parcel 202-506-9085, the Bearwell parcel, 202-506-9071, the Chan parcel, 202-506-9151, and the, excuse me, that's the Paul parcel, and then the Chan parcel, which is 202-506-9041. These four parcels actually are larger, almost more than double the size of the current homes that exist in the conservancy zone. They have been granted every variance that they have requested and every setback. The Paul parcel is now also asking for a fish-bearing stream, which we, when we installed the trail, as is the city, paid for a fish-bearing culvert, because this has been a known fish-bearing stream that crosses the parcel. So there is, they actually did put a fish-bearing culvert in, which we paid for as a city, and now they are asking to add another culvert onto the property so that they can build onto this land. And this, this land was once part of the Chan parcel and was actually designated as a part, as being a protected piece of land that no one would be able to build on, they were able to get the tax reductions, so they didn't have to build. When the trail was built, every two streams were combined into one, and by doing so, it allowed for, the already allowed for extreme variation of the 150-foot barrier where it would normally be required. They minimized it to 75 feet. They are now asking on the Paul parcel, which is coming up for its third review on the 13th, to have a 37.5, so they're asking for half of what the already maximum amount would be in order for them to be able to build onto a parcel that was once considered so protected that it was, it was actually deemed able to be able to fit into the classification that it would not be, that it would be protected at a higher level, that is no longer seen. I was told that is up to the city council to determine zoning. The zoning at the time used to be R4P, and now it is considered strictly R4, and therefore they are not held to any restrictions whatsoever, according to Gordon Cranwell.
Mr. City Manager, I don't know, I suspect most of the council doesn't have much background on these parcel numbers without going and looking them up.
I can hand you this. Here, please, we'll have the parcel numbers actually on it.
Okay, if you want to give it to our city clerk.
The city clerk will, we'll be happy to follow up with you.
This is one of the letters that I submitted for the original objections. It's front and back.
Councilmember Valderrama, do you have a question?
Again, I would ask that the council be copied on, especially this issue conservatory that's becoming a more sensitive issue with other donations coming to the city.
Aurora, can I get clarification on which fish-bearing stream you were referencing?
Yes, 0143F.
Okay, so not a name, just a number?
That, it's not actually named. They don't have, it's unnamed, 3 and 4, it is, the parcels are, there's only 13 parcels in the conservancy zone, and they have not, they have been denied building. The Bearwell parcel and the Augram parcel had been denied prior multiple times, so had, and the other land had actually been designated as protected land, and so that they were even, they had never, they had not even come up for option to be able to be built on until the trail was built. When the trail was built, by combining the streams, it would, they no longer had to fight the 150-foot buffers, but they're looking to take out major trees, at least 13 large trees, even within the zone, the area that actually sits within the King County Parks Department area. And this will be the fourth parcel, and it will more than triple the amount that is actually being taken right now. It'll be more than 900 square feet of open storefront that has not been built on ever and does not, and actually has streams that currently do run all the way down to the lake.
We'll have staff give council an update on this. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, I have Frances Garcia Hoffman.
Hi, my name is Frances Garcia Hoffman. I live at 2202 239th Place Northeast in Smamish. I'm coming here to you because we have an issue with our arts facility, lack of facility ever since the teen center has been taken away from us. We have our teen talent show coming up, and we're fighting for space. They have offered us the space, but it's not going to be there any longer. I've had over 60 kids per show. We are doing a show into the woods. We have to do it through Inglewood Middle School because there's no other place that's providing a place for us to do shows, for us to do performances, after-school enrichment classes, improv classes, drama, there's nothing, there's no place for us to go now, and we are desperate for a space. We have been working with the Y, and they have been offering us space over at Central Washington, but it's a humongous gymnasium, it's very echoey, it's very difficult to stay focused in an environment where two or three things are going on at the same time. I mean, you know, middle school and high school kids. We desperately need a place to have classes, to have music, to have performance, to have a stage, to do lighting and tech. Right now, at the YMCA at the Central Washington University, we have a class called Stage Tech. They're building the set for our Into the Woods, they're learning how to design, light, and do all that while we are rehearsing Into the Woods over at Inglewood Middle School. So I'd like to give you these flyers and invite you to come see the show, and I'd also like to invite you to do something about this underserved community of youth and even adults who have no place to go here on the plateau for the arts.
Thank you. You can just, if you want to pass them down there, we can just pass them down the dice. Wonderful, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council for non-hearing, public hearing-related items? All right, then we will close public comment. Next is our consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
I'd like to remove item number three, the council priorities.
Any others? Okay. All those in favor of, as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, the consent, the amended consent agenda passes. Mr. City Manager, where would you like to stick item three? Prior to public hearings or after?
I think that would come under unfinished business, so it'll be after the public hearings.
Great. All right. Okay, so now we have the first of our public hearings. Our first public hearing is an ordinance amending section 19A.08.190 of the Smamish Municipal Code to prohibit the circumvention of zoning density. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to turn things over to Jeff Thomas, our Community Development Director, who will give us a brief overview of the background on this particular item.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening. Just a couple of quick comments. The council will recall, you had a presentation on this matter last evening at your work session, and we had a slide deck that we presented and ran through the subject with you. As the mayor pointed out, this is a public hearing on proposed amendments to our municipal code 1908, 19A, excuse me, 08190, to prohibit the circumvention of zoning density with the division of land. This matter stems from an emergency ordinance that city council passed on September 5, 2017, to put some immediate provisions in our code as a result of a court order that we received regarding this provision of code and the application of it. The emergency ordinance is due to expire at the beginning of March, so we've got a couple weeks left here to work through this. And I do know, I'm aware from our city clerk's office, that the council has received a number of written comments in the last couple days related to the proposed amendments, and those, I believe, have been furnished to you for your reading. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. I think there's some people here that would like to speak at the public hearing this evening.
Yep, and I'll just make a quick comment, that those written comments that were submitted will become part of that public record for the hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. The first person I have is Stacy Gillette.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Stacy Gillette, and I'm, my organization is seated in Seattle, but it serves all of King County, including Smamish. Our organization supports people with intellectual and developmental disabilities.
We'll need an address, too, for the record.
An address in Smamish, of the property in Smamish?
It can be of your organization, too, just for the record.
Of our organization is 233 6th Avenue North, Seattle, 98109.
Thank you.
Great. I wanted to be sure and put a human story to the seemingly technical and innocuous land use ordinance that you're going to consider tonight, because your vote will either benefit or cost the Ark of King County upwards of $1 million. or cost the Ark of King County upwards of a million dollars. You have original homesteaders in your community, Earl and Minnie Baker, who had a son with developmental disabilities named Ed. They raised him on a farm near Pine Lake, now known as the Laurel's. Minnie Baker left all of the property that became the Laurel's to the Ark in her estate many years ago. And its development has helped to create a sustainable, robust organization, the Ark King County, which brings parent-to-parent emotional support, housing stability to families that have children with intellectual and developmental disabilities and adults, and provides a network of support and information for any issue around human rights related to people with Down Syndrome, autism, cerebral palsy, and other developmental disabilities. It was Minnie Baker's desire to create a legacy so that other families could get the help and support that she sought to raise her son with intellectual and developmental disabilities in the community. In its original design, Ed Baker was to live out his life on a piece of property that was set aside within the Laurel's and would be incorporated once he passed on. Interestingly, Ed Baker lived well beyond the time anyone thought he would. He passed away in 2013 at the age of 101, at the same time that the density rules changed in this community and the vesting in the Laurel's expired. Ed's piece, place is a small piece of property in the subject of this ordinance. Given that we have a $3.5 million annual budget, a million-dollar loss is a substantial amount that affects our organization and how we serve people with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their families greatly. I realize I may feel like a stranger, but the families and the people that we serve are an integral part of your community, living in your neighborhoods with jobs, with roots here. I've only been with the Ark for the past two years, so I can't take credit for the 82-year history that it has for serving people with developmental disabilities, but I can proudly attest to its impact to those families and to various communities, including yours. Awkwardly, I recognize that I'm asking you to not go along with the recommendations of your city staff. I'm asking you to believe us when we tell you that this small property with one home on it, if divided into four to five home lots, would greatly benefit the Ark and would have no adverse impact on the local neighborhood or on the community. Cities around our state make exceptions like this to nonprofit organizations like the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, and other nonprofit organization like ours all the time. We understand that your voters expect you to reduce density, but this has always been a small piece of land reserved to benefit others like Ed Baker and their families. And we urge you to consider Minnie's wishes and legacy when you vote tonight. I'd ask you to support the amendment that we're providing you that will exempt the Ark's property from this emergency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Bob Johns.
Yeah.
My name is Bob Johns. I am the attorney for Ark. As Ms. Gillette has explained, Ark is the owner of a small piece of property located inside the Laurel's subdivision that is designated on the plat of the Laurel's as a future development tract. That was done so that there would be an area left on that property where Ed Baker could live out the rest of his life. And everybody involved, the city staff, the builder, the Ark, and the guardian for Ed Baker agreed that the solution to this situation was designate that little piece of property for future development until Ed passed away. The staff is recommending a change to the code because they're concerned, and it's understandable that there are literally hundreds of tracks scattered all over the city designated for all sorts of purposes, stormwater protection, private access roads, critical areas, recreation space, they're all tracks. But we did some very careful research and have identified four and only four areas in the entire city that are designated on plats as future development tracks. And there's a list of them on the second page of the attachment that I have had passed out. And what we're proposing is a real simple amendment that'll solve Ark's problem, let them finish the development of this little piece of property so they can use that money to benefit the clients of Ark, the disabled children and families that they serve. And the amendment would prohibit division of tracks unless it's a future development tract designated in a plat that was created before January 1st of 2005. If you look at the little chart on the second page of my handout, there's a list of the four development, future development tracks in the city that are still big enough to divide it all. The first of these is Chestnut Lane, which I understand is extremely controversial. There's a court case that says their access is illegal, but it was platted in 2012 and the amendment we're proposing would not do anything one way or the other to benefit the Chestnut Lane project. They're on their own, they can take care of themselves. And as far as I'm concerned, if they ever figure out their access problem, they can deal with you about that when they get there. The second one is a little piece of weird-shaped property in Sammamish Heights Estates. It actually is one building site with a big, long tail, about 10 feet wide along the edge of a road. There's a building permit been issued for a single house on that lot. It's never going to be divided. There's no way to get a second building lot out of it. The third piece is a strange little piece in the plat of Old Mill Point that's tucked in behind a wetland and a drainage pond, and there's no access to it. It belongs to the homeowners association. If somebody ever figured out how to solve the access problem, they could put two lots on it. That leaves Ark, and they're the only property owner that would be affected by the little amendment which I proposed, which is on the first page, which is simply you exempt plats from this, future development tracks created before 2005. It'll solve Ark problem, they can go take care of their property, use those monies to take care of the disabled families that they serve. Thank you very much for your consideration. I hope that you can see your way through to finalizing the deal we made a long, long time ago with the city staff.
I do need you to wrap up, sir. Thank you. Next, I have Brian McCray.
Yes, I'm Brian McCray, 21533 Southeast 37th, Sammamish, Washington. I'm here to comment on behalf of the Ark because I'm probably the citizen of Sammamish, thus citizen is probably the most kind of connected to this project. I was hired by the Ark to help them with the sale and disposal of the property when it was first thought that they were going to be able to do so. But over the course of time, I've really had the opportunity to really understand the circumstances that surround this are so unique and so, you know, the circumstances are just not replicable because of all the different, as Stacy Gillette mentioned in her public comment, it just, this situation could not, you know, really occur again. It was kind of a perfect storm for this particular organization who I think in good faith went forward with the wishes of an estate to make sure that they, they adhere to what the citizen of Sammamish wanted and the care and concern she had for the, for not only her family, but also for making sure she was a good steward to the city. And that is basically what left them kind of in the lurch. They went to the city, got an approval for a plan, and then that approval changed jurisdictions. It went from King County to Sammamish in the course of the, in the course of that. And what that did was basically dishonor the, I guess, the agreement that was made between this organization and the city. Had the Ark known what this would have, the possible impact that it could have to the organization, I'm sure they would have made different decisions at that time. Obviously hindsight is 2020. I just hope, and I don't know, and I'll leave you as the experts to know procedurally and legally and code what that means, but basically I think the, the damage here is, you know, could, is an upwards of a million to a million and a half dollars to this incredible organization who by no fault of their own has really been left to, to kind of, you know, wonder what's going on and go through all this trouble of, of all of this process. So I hope that you'll, you'll understand and try to come forward with, with a solution that might meet the needs of the city of Sammamish, but also the needs of this organization too. I know it's a tough, tough situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mary Victor.
I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. I wanted to speak to this change because it's a, actually a tiny update, but it has big impact. So I think it's really worth looking at. I have a plat that I've researched before. It's called Barrington, and I'm not picking on it, there's nothing wrong with it, I'm just using it as an example. Barrington had a preliminary sub about 2013 and it got a final plat by 2016. So it's relatively new. I had asked the Honorable Jeff Thomas of the 953 lots, how many of those were non-compliant with their zoning? Like, for example, Barrington has a 3,000-square-foot lot and an 1,800-square-foot lot that are designated as open space. I would hope they would be tiny enough that they would never be able to be redeveloped again because they took five parcels, wiped out five homes, and put 45 homes there. So I think the size of the lot, if you're doing something that's non-compliant with the zoning, current zoning, that shouldn't be used in the future that you could develop that lot. Another example, which was sort of mentioned earlier, is some of Barrington's lots are labeled open space. Some of them, including one called, it's a .29 acre, so it's 12,000 square feet, those are called open areas. And they even have one open area that's a buffer that's 83,000 square feet. And having been to Barrington, it's kind of a buffer area that separates neighborhood characters, it's got some slope to it. So I think you need to look at not only that it's a lot or a tract, but you need to see what the use is. Because Barrington, which is a relatively modern subdivision and done very well as far as I know, it has open space areas and open areas, but it just seems like those shouldn't be able to be redeveloped and there's specified uses. And then it has things that are specified for storm drainage and a gigantic detention pond. If you've never seen it, it's for 44 homes and the city owns it now, I believe, because the developer just has to do it for the first two years and then it becomes the city's burden to move on after that. So pretty much everything, and then there's a whole bunch of tiny little ones because I think there was a property line thing between it and the next subdivision, they're tiny little pieces, but they're so tiny, they're, they're like tiny, so they wouldn't count. So I think your number of 953 is very large, but I think you really need to look at what is the designation of that. And I do know of another lot, it's called a tract, and it's, it's not, never had a, it is an old one, it's 13 acres, it's got a creek running through it, so it's totally subject to environmentally critical areas around it. But that one just like never had a designation, so it wasn't future or something. So you have some categories to work with here, so I think the amendment that was just suggested to you is probably worthwhile looking at, and I think you need to look. And I do agree the city should develop with net density, and I do agree you don't want people recursively going, here's a subdivision, here's a tract, recursively, here's a subdivision, here's a tract. So those are some of the things I researched, I just wanted to share with you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council during this public hearing? All right, then I will close the public hearing. Open it up to council. So we've got, councilmember Ross, sorry.
Sorry, two-part question. Jeff, if you can maybe help address this question. Of the 953-plus tracks that have been identified, and the gentleman speaking for Ark indicated that about four are designated as future development tracks. Have we done an independent assessment on how mu, how many of those 953 are designated as future development? And secondarily, can the designation as open space be also converted at any time to future development?
Those are good questions. The answer to your first question is no. There was a, a former list, I believe, that had 18 or 19 tracked parcel, whatever we call them, numbers on it, that was presented to the planning commission from Ark. Seemingly that list has been further reduced down to the four that were presented to you today. So staff in the city have not verified, we haven't went through 953 tracks extracted from the King County assessor's database to verify each one as to whether it's this stat or the other. I will say though, that the number, whether it's somewhere between four or 18 or 953, it's development reserve tracks, the, the true number is probably closer to the four or the 18 than it is to the 953.
I'm sorry, closer to what?
The true number is certainly closer to the four or the 18 than it probably is to the 953, but there is no independent verification of that. And I'm sorry, your second question again?
Of those designated as open space, can they later be converted?
So a tract, the use of a tract could be changed through a plat alteration, so there would be a process to do that. That would then potentially repurpose a tract and make it potentially subdividable or put to some other use.
Are we in questions?
I think we are in questions, discussion. There's, staff laid out three options for council to consider as far as considerations, so I think we need to probably discuss those three. The planning commission's recommendation along with staff was option number three, which altered the language and removed that future development tract slash reserve. Yeah, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Hornish.
I would move to adopt option three as staff and the planning commission recommended. I don't think I need to read it into the record, but I would like to have discussion before we have a vote.
That's second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, do you want to speak to your motion?
I repressed my button. This is a hard decision, I want you to know, and we feel for Ark. And it's been a very gut-wrenching decision for me, but I will support the adoption of number three, only because we as council need to balance the interests of all of our citizens, not just a few. We need to have consistency to all of our citizens, not by exception for just a few. And we need to kind of show that we support the prior council adoption of net density, which is what this would do to, for consistency going forward. Balanced against what we'd like to do in our heart is to give the exception for Ark and the support for the funding and desire for the funding that you guys need for the great work that you do. But on balance, I think it's, in my mind, needed to vote for number three for the consistency of, of the rest of the citizens of Sammamish and others that may not be supportive of the development of the space that's been set aside as well. So I will also highlight that if it does pass, that you probably are aware, but Ark, we do have human services that the city funds for people and for needs of the citizens and of the community. And I would recommend that and suggest that you do apply for grants through that human services committee or a commission that we have now that we do approve. But I want to make sure this is not a quid pro quo, that you guarantee that you'll get any funding or anything near what you're hoping for. So there's no promises, but I think that could be a small consolation. Thank you.
I don't have any more buttons, but I'll make a few comments as well. Already started. So I, well, I want to echo a lot of what Deputy Mayor Hornish has said. I think Ark is an amazing organization and this ultimately is not about Ark, it is about governing by exemptions, and that is not something that I personally like to do. I fear that if we make an exception here, that one of these other tracks on here that's for future development may come back and ask for an exemption as well. And I do want to be respectful of the net density. So I, I am also supportive of the suggestion from the plan. So I am also supportive of the suggestion from the Planning Commission and from staff. Councilmember Valdorama.
Yeah, no, likewise, I'd like to concur with both the sentiment of being torn and the concern for governing by exception and also of respecting the past and the current policy of net density. I do think that there is a chance, as we relook at the housing strategy, that we'll be looking at if there are opportunities or places that we want to be looking at upzoning and that we may revisit it there. The one thing that tugs at me as a concern I had raised this originally is while I understand that ARC did not, that he says that they did not understand the implications when King County switched to Samamish, the one thing that concerns me is that you never paid the higher taxes for the zoning that you're asking for. And so in addition to the issue of maintaining the net density, even if we were to do an exemption for them, there would be an unexpected, for lack of a better word, windfall that would come to this entity despite being very deserving entity and one that I support. But it would create another exemption that we'd have to be looking at and may have to deal with later on with entities, so for that reason, I'll support the recommendation.
I have no other comments, so. All those in favor of adopting the third one, which is permanent adoption of the amendments to SMC 19A.08.190, say aye. Aye. Opposed? By a vote of 7-0, it passes. Next, we have a second public hearing. This public hearing is a resolution related to the adoption of the 2018 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan for purposes of meeting the Washington State Department of Recreation and Conservation Office's submittal requirements. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Angie Fesser, who will lead us through the bit of a background and staff report, along with Anjali Meyer. So we'll let them get set up.
Good evening, members of the council, members of the public. My name is Angie Fesser, Parks Recreation Director, and I'm joined this evening by Anjali Meyer, our Deputy Director for Parks and Recreation as well. Tonight, we are presenting the final draft of the 2018 Parks Recreation Open Space Plan for consideration by adoption from the council. We've worked on this for more than a year with a considerable amount of public process and community engagement and lots of reviews and input from the Parks and Recreation Commission members here tonight, the Planning Commission, as well as the Arts Commission. And we're bringing forward a final draft that was presented to the council on January 16th and a handoff from the Parks and Recreation Commission. And tonight, we'll be at a public hearing in regards to this, and then we will have a presentation and follow-up from the meeting on the 16th after the public hearing closes.
All right. I will open the public hearing. The first person I have is Kevin Bartholomew.
Kevin Bartholomew, 1019, 272nd Place Southeast. So this is my first meeting. I'm not sure exactly how this works, but I represent, I guess, a sports dad in the community and a coach. I sit on the Samamish Baseball Club Board. I'm the treasurer for that, coach soccer and coach Little League baseball as well. So as I read through the plan, just wanted to give, I guess, my feedback for you guys' consideration. While the plan has, talks a lot about, you know, converting fields to turf, it looked like in the kind of the feedback section, that was ranked lower. But when I look at the data, if you, you know, add up, you know, the need for baseball, softball, soccer, lacrosse, football, you know, I think if you add that together, I think a lot of that can be solved by converting some of our fields that are currently grassed to turf, especially Beaver Lake Park. You know, I don't know how many years we're going to have like last year, but the number of games that got rained out was off the charts. I know that costs the city money, but it costs the kids as well, and it's certainly frustrating to miss games and not, you know, really get a full season of baseball in particular. And then when you look at a lot of the fields that we use for use soccer, they're less than ideal when you look at Challenger Elementary and some of those schools that really aren't designed to be playing sports on all year round. And then there's another aspect of the number of times that families in Samamish have to leave the plateau to go play sports, whether we're going to Marymore or, you know, Issaquah, Bellevue, Redmond, many of those other cities have facilities that are further along than our city. So I would just encourage the council to look for ways to where we can convert some of those fields to turf and get the benefit that we've seen from the community fields at Eastlake and at Skyline. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Rohit Puri.
My name is Rohit Puri. I live at 24014 Southeast 12th Place in Samamish. And like my friend here, I coach soccer for my kids, and I've been doing it for the last five years. And I also am on the board for Issaquah Football Club, a soccer club in the region. Most of our players are from Samamish. And like you mentioned, that the need for having turf fields, I think I'd like to second that opinion, because every time a kid has a season, they're looking forward to a game on Saturday, and it gets canceled because the field is wet or damp or cannot be played on, right? So having turf fields which are cross-sport would be very helpful. And I'd recommend, one other thing is the sizing. It doesn't have to be one field for soccer, but having smaller sizes, being able to adjust it for different sports would be a good thing to have. So I haven't read the plan yet. This is my first meeting. I tend to go back and take a look, but that's what I'm going to call out here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Jan Bird.
Hello, my name is Jan Bird. I live at 3310-221st Avenue Southeast here in Samamish. And I'll thank you for the opportunity to comment on the PRO Plan, and I support the direction that it's taking. I know that there are some that are concerned with the cost, but when you compare the per-capita that we have here of $81.31 to the National Parks and Recreation data for other cities a size of $85.97 per resident, it seems like we're on the right track. And with the median price of a home in Samamish, per Zillow, I looked up today, of $935,500, I think we probably can afford it. Early on in the city's history, I understood we missed an opportunity to obtain some more waterfront property near where Samamish Landing is today. Apparently, there was grant money available, and what Samamish had to do was chip in $100,000. Council decided that was too much money, and of course, now that's prior property we wish we had purchased. Right now, if you look at what's remaining on the lake, I noticed the other day, there's one that was $1 million, another one $1.8, and just a tiny strip of land, probably not even a quarter of an acre. So we shouldn't miss out on these kind of opportunities in the future, trying to strike a balance between excessive spending, but not being so cheap that we miss out on some really crucial opportunities. I think there also was a concern that Beaver Lake Preserve was first purchased, but that's become quite a gem connecting both Hazel Wolf Wetlands and Soaring Eagle. And it's wonderful to have these connecting pieces rather than this islands of land, because this is good for wildlife habitat, tree canopy, especially with increased development. Connecting pieces are really critical. And although 46% of the people surveyed thought we had enough parks, that still means 54% probably didn't. And that's how they're feeling right now that we have enough, but with increased growth that we know we're going to get, we do need to plan ahead like we've done in the past with some of these other parks. I was a little disappointed to see the Pine Lake YMCA property feasibility study still included. I thought, from what I'd heard, it was supposed to be rather expensive, would serve a small number of people, and it was an environmentally sensitive area that'd be really difficult to build on. So that's one part I'd like to see removed. I was happy to see that we have a holding facility for salvaged plants is included in some of the proposals here. I've raised hundreds of Western red cedars for my yard over the years, and a couple weeks ago, I gave 70 to Mountains to Sand Greenway because I was kind of running out of space to storm on my property. If the city had had one, I could have given it to you guys, and maybe they weren't big enough right now, but, you know, you would have had some cedars down the road. So I'm glad that that's something that's in there. I also like the thrust towards trail connections, like the Emerald Necklace. I also hope we see more connections when we plan for new roads and road upgrades, as well as new developments. Like, I'm hoping when Snake Hill gets opened up, I'm sure hoping there's more than a white line to walk on to get down to the Eastlake-Samamish Trail. So trail connections are really important. I'm glad they're part of the PRO Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Tim McGruder.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Tim McGruder. I'm the Conservation Co-Chair, and speaking on behalf of the Eastside Audubon Society. Our office address is 308 Fourth Avenue South, Kirkland. We have approximately 1,100 members, and about 10% of our membership has Samamish addresses. I'm here tonight to endorse the PRO Plan because of its focus on protection of tree canopy, preservation of existing open space and natural areas, and open space acquisition. It's probably no surprise that the primary reason for our support is the importance to wildlife habitat, but that's not the only reason. At Audubon, we view the natural environment as the second paycheck. I'm surprised at how often I have a wildlife encounter during my routine travels throughout the east side. It's common to see bald eagles, red-tailed hawks, coyotes, deer, and it's no accident. We place a great deal of value on these types of encounters, and we are the envy of many other places in the country. It's certainly why I live here, and I suspect the same is true of many of you. It's these experiences that sustain the value of our community and will continue to make Samamish an amazing place. The environmental ethic of this PRO Plan is consistent with community values and will be looked upon fondly many years from now because of the vision and leadership of this council, and I urge you to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Yes, Mr. Eastman.
James Eastman, 196th Avenue, vacant parcels for the PRO Plan. I want to emphasize that, yeah, we got a lot of open space in Samamish already, but it's a lot better when we have access to it. And I want to encourage the city to actually go forward and work together with the landowners, especially myself in the no disturbance area, to work on ways to allow us to responsibly develop our property while putting in trails, connecting Timberline, Crissalis, Hidden Ridge, down to the Eastlake-Samamish Parkway Trail, down to the Landing Park. As mentioned before, a lot of my land is not going to ever get developed, and it's not usable, but it would make great use to have trails and to have people actually from the city enjoy it. It also could take on more trees, and there's a lot of stuff that can be done to improve our vacant land, provide connectivity, to provide enjoyment of Samamish residents. But on the other end, when we're limiting these landowners to minimal, barely any use of their land through some of the other codes, the happy medium could never be reached. So once again, like the tree code with this Parks Plan, I'm all for it. I hope that we can work together with landowners and provide, you know, the whole city access to these beautiful untouched areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay. Mr. City Manager, do I close the hearing, or are we leaving it open because of the com plan?
At this point, I'd close the hearing.
Okay. All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and then turn it back to you.
So moving forward, what we'd like to do now is shift into responding to the matrix that we had developed as a response to the council members' questions and comments from the meeting held on January 16th, plus additional comments that were submitted after that. We're not going to do another PowerPoint, because when I went to development, I couldn't come up with more than two slides, so there was no reason to do a PowerPoint, so bonus points for that. But instead, what we do have is the actual matrix. We're going to have it up on the screen to monitor. And we have 70-plus items on the matrix, but what we'd like to do is just kind of work through this page by page, and if there is an item that council members would like to discuss as a group, we highly encourage that. We have some notes in there that some items we would prefer to have council direction on and clarification on to move forward. We have some staff recommendations that are in there. But if everybody is accepting of what the staff recommendation is or the response, then there's no need to comment on that. We can move through it. So we don't have to go through all 70 items. We don't have to go through the alphabet letter by letter, but we're basically just going to pick out the vowels on this and work on a couple of items as we go through. So that being said, we'd kind of like to start off working through the first section. This is divided up in kind of-
Can I ask a question just for framing it before that, Angie? When does this have to be done? Is there a dead, a drop-dead date by when this has to be adopted? And when is the plan currently to have this approved?
Correct. So the schedule upcoming is tonight's discussion. Staff is requesting to break out just the CIP and discuss that next Tuesday on the 13th as its own entity. Then we'd bring back the revisions from tonight's meetings, the CIP work, and all of that on the 27th of this month, and ask the council to consider adoption at that time. The deadline for state funding for submittal of the PRO Plan is March 1. However, I don't want that to be critical for this discussion, and I want the council to be comfortable with the PRO Plan. So if we need to go a couple of weeks past that, I believe we have some permission to do that. So if we need to roll this through to another meeting, that's perfectly acceptable.
Thank you.
And Angie, just for council clarification, I'm seeing some yellow over here on the site. Are these the ones that council previously elected that we wanted to discuss?
Correct. So we had some feedback from individual council members about which items they would kind of like to call out and talk about more. Those are highlighted in the first column in yellow, and the first item, as I was going to kind of mention, is actually this, the first chunk is 11 items related to historic preservation. So those are all highlighted. Don't be scared, the whole, there's, the whole document isn't like this. This is just a big first section. So with that being said, I would like to kind of put the historic preservation discussion on the table for the council to talk about more and to determine what degree of incorporation to have historic preservation into the PRO Plan. So I'll let the council discuss at that point.
Deputy Mayor Hornish.
Okay. You, on one of these, and I don't know which one it is, but it says that the heritage, for lack of better words, the liaison with the Samamish Heritage Society is through community development, not parks and recreation. Correct. Is that been the practice? I mean, who's actually, I mean, even that's where it resides, but where does it actually happen? I mean, because there seems to be a lot of, I was trying to make a distinction in my mind, because the Heritage Society says, hey, we think this could be landmarked, and, but that probably involves more community development, but then, once it is landmarked, then parks jumps in and becomes involved. Is that correct?
The second part, not necessarily. So-
I would say only, only if it's located within a park.
Within a park. Okay, so that's the distinction. Okay.
Right. So it primarily starts with community development, deals with the land use issues and landmarking and working through that process, determining historic. And Jeff can maybe comment on this a little bit more, too. He's still here in the back.
Well, and the other, as a follow-on to that, in the budget, I noticed that there is a line item in the parks for the professional services of Heritage Society for $5,000 in both '16 and '17.
Correct.
Can you highlight to me what that, is that the funding that goes to Heritage Society from the city?
Correct. Yes, that's their, the city's allocation. We have a contract with them for that $5,000- We have a contract with them for that $5,000 a year. They provide interpretive services. They're supposed to go to the schools and promote historic preservation through the city, and it's kind of the city's way of supporting them in their efforts and their work. But we just happen to manage the contract for them.
Okay. Do they receive any other funding from community development?
No, not that I'm aware of. I believe they do have some support from community development with the landmark program through King County.
Okay, that's helpful.
Right, right.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that if I read the pro plan correctly, it sounds like you're proposing that, again, that your consideration of historic sites or historic preservation really only comes when there is that overlap, when it occurs in a park. And I would like to say that I'm supportive of that. I think that if we want to, as a city, to do more than that, then we need to kind of overtly make that decision and fund that, I guess, for lack of a better term, I don't want to create unfunded mandates on the Parks and Rec Department. So, I'm supportive of kind of how you're proposing to handle it here in the pro plan.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Valderrama.
Tagging on to both of those, my one concern that I have, and it follows what Councilmember Stewart had said, is to make sure that the Heritage Society has the full expectation and understanding that this is what's going to happen, because last year, they came to us, and I forget what was the amount, they got 120,000-plus because of the website and others.
It was 15, I think.
That they had gone in. But the original way that it had been chartered and set up was to be that they be self-sufficient, and so, just to make sure that they've signed on and understand this, because if not, there has to be a whole new policy discussion that has to take place. And that last year was a one-off that we were doing to be able to consider those requests for the archiving and stuff that they needed. That's independent from what we're talking about, the preservation of sites, and that is here, because I'm in agreement here. I just want to make sure that the budget is reflective of the reality, and we don't have what happened last year that we're suddenly surprised by the request and the scale. Thanks.
Councilmember Moran.
And now, the question comes in with this money that just came in regarding this house that was torn down, this historical house that was taken down. So whose budget is that money in? Is that in community development funding? Is that in their bank account holdings, or is that in parks?
Well, currently, it's kind of in the city's coffers, generally speaking.
But under whose funding? Where would you find it? Who, under whose? Because I know they're trying to decide who, if they want to get toward that, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, one, why we would even have held on to that. I would have given it right to them. So when they want some, who do they go to? Do they go to parks? Do they go to Jeff? This is what I was, my confusion was to start with, was that it wasn't really called out in there who they went to. Did they go to, do they go to Jeff? Do they go to community development? Do they go to parks? That was my confusion in the beginning, is it didn't really call out where they went to.
Right. So that's a, it's a new program for us. It's, oh, hi, Jeff. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Jeff, and I'm back. Councilmember Moran, are you referring to the Eddie House and the SEPA mitigation funds that were received for that? So my understanding is that money was received by the city, and it should, Lyman would probably know better than I, but I believe it's part of the overall city general fund, perhaps in reserve at this point.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So generally, we have not determined what we would use that money for. It does not belong to the Samamish Historical Society, belongs to the city. However, it could be earmarked by the council as part of a budget process, and there are opportunities to use that for historical preservation, but it has not yet been determined by council.
As far as the historical stuff on here, I want to be sure that the council is supportive of the action items that say, and maybe we can scroll down a little bit, Angie, that say revision completed or to be completed, because some of them are historical related, adding language like landmarked for the Reared Freed House.
Well, that's item 12.
True. But there are several others. So item 11 has revision to be complete, seven. I just want to be sure that the council is okay with those.
What's the implication to the city of that?
Of what?
Being cited as landmarked.
Well, that's 12. We're working through 11. So, I mean, you can read staff's response or their staff's recommendation based on the comment. I just want to be sure, as we move through this document, that council is okay with any changes that they have made based on this matrix and the comments coming from council. Got a thumbs up down at the end of the dais.
I think the question that Councilmember Valderrama was going to ask is, perhaps Jeff could explain what, or if there will be any consequences of putting in landmark status on-
So I think that comes on item 12, though.
It's already been designated, though. What are the implications?
So, the Reared Freed House was actually designated a landmark in 2011, so they have gone through the process.
By just labeling it as such, it makes no difference.
No implications to the city, just-
So, no, I mean, they've already started their improvements and their plans for the restoration of the house, but, yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay. So basically, it's just a designation or a categorization of it as part of the plan that we missed, and it has no further implications because it already is a landmark status.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, just kind of going back to the money that was received, I guess, one thing that might be interesting to follow up on is, if I understand correctly, we, as a city, have spent money already in helping the Historical Society with some of these efforts. And so, I guess, one question that we probably need to handle, and that, I think that's outside of the pro plan, but something we should address is how we're going to keep track of all of that, to make sure that we're okay with the monies that are being spent, and that maybe that money could be, as you implied, earmarked or something, so that we're using it to sort of self-fund it, so.
Maybe staff can highlight that when we go through the budget process.
Be part of the budget process, yes.
Great. Deputy Mayor Hornish. Oh, Jeff, did you have something?
Mayor, if I may, just to Councilmember Stewart's comment, so by way of example, so that, going back to the $50,000 for a second from the Eddie House, so that money has not, my understanding is that money has not been specifically spent, any of that balance. However, to Councilmember Stewart's comment, the city does incur expenses, unfunded expenses in terms of staff time, in terms of a recent landmark nomination that we've just had, legal expenses to our city attorney's group, and to shepherd through landmark nominations through the King County Historic Landmark Commission, which serves, by interlocal agreement, as our landmark commission here for the city. So, while we do have that $50,000, and we haven't specifically rolled any pre-planned expenditures off of that, it's in the general fund secret vault upstairs in finance, we certainly do incur real expenses in terms of staff time, legal time, and other, you know, advertising expenses and so forth, related to historic preservation efforts and landmark nominations.
Thank you for that context, Jeff. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to the task at hand for tonight, because I think that's an interesting budget, but we'll deal with it later this year. One through 11, I think what we're hearing is a consensus that none of the comments and questions that were suggested are incorporated, including item number five, where you put forth some draft language, but that, the recommendation would be not to include that, correct? And I want to, I want to focus on that one just for a second, and make sure everybody's in agreement as council, to not put in the historic-built environment in that language. Everybody on board with that?
Say that again.
Item number five.
Item number five. No, I follow, I just made sure, because there was kind of like a double negative in there.
Follow, staff's recommendation would be to consider not supporting the addition of that language. So the red line gets deleted in the final pro plan. But I think you did add in item seven, historic resource mapping and preservation, which you said that would be fine, and I think, I think it shows that we have the input from the Samamish Heritage Society in thinking about it, because you do play a role, if it comes onto the park, as to maintaining it and everything. And I think there was one other one below that, too. Well, I think it was item 11 that kind of says, has been added to the group to address that item 11. So I think the only real change is to not put in any of those questions comments and not put in the proposed language in five, column D. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I think, I don't know where everyone else is, but I think I'm supportive of the recommendations, and the ones that say revision to be completed, I'm supportive, and that's, I think, and that includes 12, because 12 actually is under, is housed under that historical, even though it's not highlighted in yellow, it's still in that same bucket and has a revision. So, is the council okay with the items that are listed on that right-hand side under action that say, okay, I have some head nods, but not enough? Okay, good. All right, we're making progress.
Yeah, so, but actually, before we move on, there are two items that I did want specific clarification on, and that's items three and four, and that's incorporating GIS data into our gap analysis map in the pro plan, which staff is actually not necessarily supporting. And then the second one is just using the graphic of a map showing the landmarked sites within the city of Samamish, which staff does support. So, items three and four, I'd like a little direction from council on.
Can you clarify? You would say, you would reject three, but do, but go for four?
Correct.
And that would just be putting a new map into the pro plan? Does that map exist?
Yeah, there's one, we have, we have current GIS data on landmark sites within the city of Samamish, and we could drop that into the pro plan as its own graphic and kind of talk about that a little bit, showing the designated landmarks within the city of Samamish. What I'm hesitant to support, though, is taking that same GIS data and rolling that into our gap analysis work that we do with our big park sites and the gap analysis that we have.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So.
Everybody okay? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Very helpful. Okay, so, the next one, I think, is number 14 and number 15. So if we'll scroll down to those.
If she skips by something that you want to bring up, you can still bring it up. She's just highlighting the ones that were brought up before.
So there's another one that says-
Hold on, Deputy Mayor, did you have a question?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
All right, so for number nine, it says council direction. Do you need direction on that one as well?
No, we're just-
No, we're good, okay.
Yep. Okay. Go ahead. So where are we at, Angie?
It's number 14.
14.
Kind of clarifying the accessibility of waterfront, and how to word that. Two council members, I believe, or one council member wanted to talk about this a little bit more, so we did call that out.
I'm, personally, I'm supportive of the suggested language from staff.
Okay.
Me, too.
Okay.
We got head nods, I think. Or they're static, they're, at least, they're not saying no.
Well, I think that may have been called out, just so you have clear direction.
Right.
That this language is okay.
Appreciate that. Okay.
Okay.
Well, hold on one second. I guess I'm trying to figure out, but is limited to 150 feet? There are several beach parks over there, so is the total of those beach parks 150 feet, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Seems like it would be more, I agree. Okay. Next.
Next, 15, language related to the moratorium, to include that or not. The point being that the information, this is the beginning of the pro plan, and kind of talking about the environment, the general feel of the community at that time that the pro plan was done. And the moratorium was listed as a reference to say that people are concerned about growth, and that the moratorium was a response to that. So that's why it was included in the discussion. Also, though, it is kind of a bit of a side note to know that while the moratorium is in place, that there will be a point in time where the park impact fees that were suspended during that time will impact some of the revenue flow later on down the road. So in some ways, it's kind of nice to have in the document, so that two or three years from now, if somebody's kind of reading through it, there's some history of that and might be able to explain that a little bit, too. But, so both comments 15 and 16 were comments about the moratorium, and considering it, leaving it in the pro plan or taking it out. So it's up to council.
Deputy Mayor Hornish.
I support the removal of the moratorium language, because I think, when I think about the pro plan, I think about what we're planning for the, for the future parks and recreation and open space. Whether or not there was a moratorium is kind of irrelevant to me. I appreciate the point.
Sure.
But to me, this is a plan for what we want it to be, no matter what, whether there's a moratorium in place or not.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Likewise, I concur. This is a temporal issue, and let's keep the vision.
Okay. Councilmember Ross.
I agree, and you characterized part of the reason for including it was budgetary reasons, revenues. That hypothetically referencing a moratorium, such as moratorium, et cetera, could be put into the financial or budget section.
Member Stewart.
I'd be okay leaving the comments in, as long as we are careful how we word it. I think that, to your point about sort of creating the general sense of what the, I don't know, what the atmosphere is at the time of creating this plan, that there is a lot of concern around conservation and the environment and the character of the city. But I just would be very careful about making any commentary as to, you know, some of the more technical matters around the moratorium. So, I'd be okay if we want to just mention it in terms of that atmosphere, but I just, I don't want it to be something that someone could challenge, the technical accuracy.
I'm personally supportive of a removal of it, so.
Contemptance.
Okay, we'll remove it, then. Thank you. Okay, we're rolling along. Item number 20 and 21, they're kind of related, talking about, so the text is about narratives about neighborhood and mini parks, and just a description of what they are. Although there was some suggestions about adding additional narrative, talking about in Samamish that there are public and private parks and open space, and kind of clarifying that a little bit. So if the council would like, we can add some more language that kind of recognizes that in these pages here at the pro plan.
I think this was my suggestion, and the reason I'm supportive of it is that the term open space, without more clarification around that term, sounds like you can just go, and that's not necessarily the case.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, so we'll add some clarification there on those. Thank you, very helpful. The next one identified was number-
Hold on one second.
I'm sorry.
Going back, we skipped over number 20, correct?
20 and 21 are very similar.
20 and 21 were together.
Yeah.
Together.
Well, then I'll continue on number 20, that I would like to have the other parks included into it, the HOA-owned, and that in the 2012 plan, as I recall, we did include them in there to get a sense of what are the facilities not in the control. We also included in that the trails, and so to get a better sense of how much we really have in our city, whether it's county or city-owned, I would like that to be included in.
Absolutely. Yep. Great, thank you. Next one is comment number 26. That was called out by one council member to talk about a little bit more.
I think that was me that called it out, and I'm reading it really quick, because I have scribbled notes over it. I think it, my contention was the recently completed, even though I was supportive of the revisions that staff had made, it was the term recently. We talk about this document being temporal.
Okay.
And the recently is, was just problematic for me.
Okay, so we'll remove that, because it kind of adds a timeliness to it, sure. Easy enough. Okay, easy enough. Number 29 was the next one, including the Reared Freed House in the list of city facilities. These facilities were listed as, in a programming sense, that spaces that are available, that are owned by the city, that provide programming. And so the Reared Freed House is not currently ready for programming or public occupancy yet. It's going through some improvements. So it is still listed in site assessments as well as in the Recreation Programming Chapter, but we didn't include it in the listing of the facilities that are available for programming at this time, so. So staff is recommending...
Jan, maybe you can step outside if you can't figure out how to turn it off because it's very disruptive.
This was, or, do you have, you have your button push, do you have a comment?
On 29?
Do you have a comment?
On 29?
Okay.
Yeah, I personally would like to see it included and put an asterisk next to it saying currently not programmable, but that it still shows up as an asset. I mean, we've put in money to move it and to do all this other stuff, so why are we going to say it doesn't exist? Just put an asterisk next to it.
Okay.
I would support that.
Do that.
When do you think it will be programmable?
That's a good question.
Within the next six years, let me ask you that.
Yes.
Okay, for that reason, I like the idea of an asterisk.
Yeah, good point.
Both before ST3.
Okay, and then the next item is number 30, dealing with the naming of Bill Reams/East Samamish Park and some of the history there related to that. We can do some additional history if the council would like. We're still digging into that a little bit to see exactly. It did come to us named as East Samamish/Bill Reams Park, but we're trying to find a little bit more out about the reason behind that and why it was named that way, the intent of that.
I think that was my question, and I'm fine if staff wants to continue to research that and then maybe bring us back some more information that we can discuss.
Yeah, we can have that hopefully by the 27th, if not by next Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay, and then the next one is just below it, number 32, asking why Hazel Wolf Wetlands was not included in the city-owned preserves listed on page 48. So, and also using Soaring Eagle as a question. So the qualifiers for that list for preserves were city-owned preserves, started with city preserves. But there's a really good point in the fact that both the Wetlands and Soaring Eagle have really limited access, mostly through the city of Samamish. And I think people who live here kind of utilize those preserves as if it was kind of a city-owned property, although we don't technically own them. So that's kind of why it was left off the list. If the council desires to have those included on the list, maybe with, again, a little asterisk and a little narrative or a little description of that, we're happy to do that.
That was going to be my suggestion. I think that was mine. It's the Hazel Wolf, and I was thinking asterisk, so I'm glad you said that.
Yeah, okay, so a little explanation about that, so.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
Okay, moving right along, scrolling down to number 40 and 41, those are pretty closely related. And this is dealing with the proposed trail corridor graphic and map that is a wide swath kind of showing proposed trail corridors, basically from connection to connection. How are we connecting the dots? And that swath kind of highlighted over an area that someone was concerned that a trail wouldn't be buildable in that area. So we are proposing some language here, underlined in red, that kind of addresses that to say that these are just corridors, they're not parcel-specific, but this is the general area that we're trying to get from point A to point B. And over time, those corridors would be focused in on and drilled into and narrowed down and identified parcel by parcel, but...
So this one was mine, and I didn't include 40 for the reason that you said wide swath, but I included 41 in wanting to discuss because it's not a wide swath and it follows a very specific line, which also follows the developer's path that they wanted to put a road in. And that was a little too specific. So if you can change the map so it's more wide swath, then I'm okay with it. But because it was a very finite dash line on item 41 on page 133, that's why I called that out to discuss, so.
We will definitely do that, so.
And one concern I have is when we say something is not a plan but a roadmap guideline, unfortunately, the specifics then sometimes become the plan. That's just reality.
Sure.
So I appreciate and I would agree with the idea of making it more conceptual versus specific.
Yeah.
For this one that we know about and highlight. But what I would also ask, are there other ones that has been delineated on that map that should be made wider, too? So it's not just that one, I guess. I'm going to throw it back to maybe think about what other conceptual drawings on that map may be more conceptual than specific.
I looked at it, I didn't see any personally, other than the one I've called out.
Right.
But I wouldn't, you know, bet my life on it that some of them don't currently...
Sure.
...exist.
Okay, noted, thank you very much. Okay, number 44, levels of service. So I think, Tom, this was one of interest of yours, wanted some clarification on that. Did you have additional questions?
I put it there just so you get clear guidance and make sure that we are all on board with the proposed language. I was, so.
Okay, so, yeah, we provided more information, we are providing some suggested language that can answer some of the questions and clarify some of the points that council members had. So if everyone is happy with the additional language there, that would be, and we'll move forward with that.
Yeah, I think so. I thought Andrew was just kind of capturing your...
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Just waiting to hear. Give everybody a chance to read through it, thank you. And number 47, at the bottom of the page there, this is, this is an interesting discussion talking about, again, kind of that Soaring Eagle land about, it's not necessarily in the city limits, but it's used as if it's kind of a city park based on access. There's two access points on it, both of them are through the city of Samamish. So a couple of council members were talking about, well, why can't we kind of roll that in as a consideration for some of the calculations? And on the chart on page, let's see, page 95, it's kind of comparing open spaces by jurisdiction. So our neighboring jurisdictions, their city-owned open space, and then our calculations for that. So if we wanted to, we're recommending, staff's recommending to add kind of another line that rolls in the acreage from both, I'm sorry, Soaring Eagle and Hazel Wolf Wetlands, and make a note of that and how that does kind of then, what are the percentage of open space for the city of Samamish and open spaces that are adjacent to city Samamish and only accessible through Samamish? So we can add a third line on that table and show that as well.
Deputy Mayor Hornish.
I like the third line, but I want to give a little more color for the rest of the council as to why I was concerned about not including them, only because since we are on the urban growth boundary and we are connected to these two specific sites, so we have access to and our citizens have direct access to this open space, even though it kind of comes back to that earlier comment, it's not city-owned. So we don't put it in there, and we don't know what the other cities are doing as far as including anything just outside that their citizens have access to. But I think we, when we're looking at the comps, as to how much parks, recreation and open space we actually have, for our citizens, it's not city-owned, but we should be aware that this is available for our citizens, but it's not a direct comp, presumably, because we, well, we don't know what they're doing. But now we kind of have a better feel for what we're actually thinking about. The question came up, if we include those, why not include some other parks that are outside the city limits but in somebody else's jurisdiction, like Marymore as an example? We, our citizens have access to that, too. So there has to be some cutoff, and it just needs to kind of be clear in our mind as to comparing apples to apples.
So this was my comment originally, and I am still supportive of it because the city owns, what is it, 30 acres inside Soaring Eagle?
Correct.
And then the balance of it is outside. My argument is, once you're in the park, you don't know whether you're in the city-owned portion on the trail. There's no sign that says leaving Samamish, right? You just keep going. And because the access is exclusive to the city of Samamish, I wanted that third line just so, we still have the city-owned, but we'll add that extra in that will show that we do have that amenity for our residents, so. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I guess we just probably need to make sure we're consistently sort of accounting for this when we do the urban forestry management as well. So just something to keep in mind, right, that do we have a separate line to talk about that as well?
That's actually a good point, yeah, excellent.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Hornish, I just want to make sure, my understanding is because we are, as, you know, Councilmember Valderrama and I were talking about, we're budding, we're touching Soaring Eagle, whereas there is Redmond between us and Marymore.
Fair enough.
Is that... Well, that would argue to say maybe include the ones that are abutting.
Yeah.
And we actually threw that out and contemplated that, but then that negates the city-owned to do the comp with the other, for what Redmond has.
Okay.
Because they only show city-owned.
Okay.
And we don't own it, but we should be aware of it.
Okay. And right now, this does not include, we're not creating a separate line, like an asterisk, a separate point for...
Yes, there is. If you go and look at that page, there's already three asterisks there because Bellevue is using some areas in their calculation that aren't Bellevue's. And so this would be adding yet another asterisk, but I just thought it was important to capture Soaring Eagle.
Oh, I agree, totally, yeah.
It's an awareness.
Yes, and Hazel Wolf Wetlands for that.
Sure.
Now, do we get partial credit for the Samamish Landing Park since Redmond primarily uses the head?
This discussion, nice try, though. Okay, are we okay with this moving on? Okay, we have head nods.
So capital overpost, owning or pushing the next week, right?
Right, kind of the next section there is starting with kind of line 51. There's a handful of questions there, but I'm proposing that we move the CIP discussion to the next meeting and do that in its entirety.
Great.
By itself, so.
If you have questions there, we'll address those on the 13th, correct? 13th? No? Yes? Okay.
And then we also had identified by council members, number 60 and 61. So these are kind of a little more in the realm of general comments, but the first one was 60 is dealing with concessionaires at park facilities. And it's a good question, hasn't been addressed in a while by the council, but if the council wanted to provide direction to staff to explore this a little bit more, both in kind of what are some of the options we have available, what the code revisions would be to reflect that, we would be happy to do that work. But it's kind of outside the scope of the pro plan, but it kind of spurred off some other work if the council does so desire.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Sorry, I'm...
I don't have any questions. So are we amenable to staff's suggestion on this, or Deputy Mayor?
I think it's a good idea to look into, but I'd not put it as a high priority.
Correct.
Great.
Okay, all right. And then same thing on number 61, there is some discussion within the pro plan regarding next steps of looking at, you know, feasibility of an arts center or a senior center. I know there's been a lot of conversation about that. If the council, you know, is interested in kind of taking that next step and looking into that, the pro plan recommends it within the next five years. But if you wanted to do something sooner than that, we might be able to roll some things up and produce some scopes of those for the budget process coming up, if the council does so desire.
I'm sure, which number are we on?
Deputy Mayor Hornish?
61.
61.
I'm okay with the soft language we have in there right now because it's been a consideration, I think, in the past few years, but it's always, it's a very high hurdle to get over from an economic point of view.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, I'd agree with that and with the roads situation we have, and, yeah.
Other priorities. I'd like to go back a second, we're finished with this number.
I think we're done.
Did we get a head nod, everybody?
Yeah, so if we're done, I'd like to go back up to 59 as the first one. And we've been talking about it in different ones. You talk about the community plan, pro plan ideally would provide an athletic field that would enable and encourage a sense of community. We've talked about the issue with ball fields. We've had two speakers here today, both who slid out apparently in the interim, on that, about the need for fields. We have a dire need for fields in this city right now. We had that a lot, was it a year ago, when we had the lacrosse, the soccer teams asking for more fields. Since then, we've now had a reduction in the hours on the community fields. We're going to lose the field behind Margaret Mead, and most of the year, those other fields were already at 100%. So the question is, when does this take place? This, to me, seems to be a real priority for our citizens. It's the one thing I constantly hear every time I go out is, we need fields. And that was before what's going on with the community fields and Meads. We have an indoor facility that's discussed here. I don't see it showing funding or when or a prioritization. And maybe that's a problem I have with this whole plan, that I don't see the council's priorities being put on this plan. I see the chronology of events being laid out, but I don't see the council priorities and their fingerprint as to what we want funded and when we want it funded. This is an urgent need that's going to be needed both for the fields and the other, and I'd like to see it reflected. So for that purpose, I'd like to see, you cite how much you think it'll cost, when you think this could be done, and is this the why property or another property that this could be done, that you can be providing the athletic field complexes that would encourage that sunset community?
So I guess I'm just a little confused about the question, are you calling out the indoor facility feasibility study that's listed on the CIP, or...
Start identifying where could these fields be that we're talking about, especially since we know now we're losing fields, so where are we going to be having them? I mean, we heard not only the issue for our kids needing fields here, but also if we want to talk about all the traffic issues to stop them from leaving the plateau, where do we accommodate these kids here?
Right.
Both of these facilities, we could talk about indoor, outdoor turf, natural, where are they? I think that, to me, personally, I don't know the others, but for myself, as I've said many times, that, to me, is the priority that we've got to address right now.
Right, so a couple approaches on that. During the gap analysis work in the pro plan does identify a general location for a community park, which would house, typically house, an athletic complex. So a number of multi-use fields inside of that. So that's kind of been identified in the pro plan. In addition to that, the CIP does recognize and recommend a lot of field renovations, so taking our natural turf and converting them into artificial turf with possibly lights to extend usage on those fields as well is another approach, is highly recommended in the pro plan. And the CIP does start to identify some of those next steps, how to make that happen. Staff is also, during the CIP presentation, going to ask the council to consider an athletic fields study, to drill into this very idea about what should we do first? Should we try to buy land and build new fields, or should we renovate the fields that we have? And if so, how do we prioritize those? Who should be, which field should be going first? What's the biggest return for investment on those? So next Tuesday, we'll have much more detail in the discussion related to athletic fields.
And on that table that we asked earlier about ABC priorities, will those now be reflected as As versus where they are now? Because I see, when I look at that ABC prioritization table, that... Because I see, when I look at that ABC prioritization table that you emailed me earlier today, I don't see that as jumping out as priorities to look at.
Correct, so that's part of the discussion next week. If the council wants to shift those priorities around, that's what the staff is asking for input from the council as well. We've also had, you know, feedback in the pro plan for priority is preservation and open space, you know, tree canopy and keeping that a high priority in the land acquisition strategy, that was the priority, and we're seeing that through the pro plan as well. So it's definitely a fine balancing act, and so council's input and influence and direction on that will be helpful, and I think we can get into that a little bit.
That'd be a good deliberation for us, and to lay that out, the priorities that they should be following, and hence their work plan to be following.
So I think, it sounds like we'll discuss most of this during the next time we meet, when we're discussing CIP.
Yeah.
So we can drill down on it then.
Okay.
Apologies. Deputy Mayor Hornish, did you have?
Yeah, along those same lines, though, and I know we'll discuss it next week, but there was a comment in the public comment earlier, or on the public hearing, that our natural to artificial turf was not a high priority, but I'm looking through the draft CIP, and all of those are As.
Yeah.
Did I miss something, or?
No.
Was that just a misunderstanding? Okay.
Right.
So they are, going to natural turf is a high priority under the proposed CIP, but we'll discuss it next week, I guess.
Going to artificial turf.
Going to artificial turf.
Artificial turf, sorry, sorry.
Correct, yeah.
Councilmember Ross?
I don't want to pile on, but this is critical also to consider the growth.
The growth of our community, I'm a multicultural family with, married to Chinese, and just about every immigrant, the first sport is soccer, and we're having a growth that's depicted in the pro plan of growth in different cultures that are very high on soccer as an example. So we are, need to really address the capacity, as you suggested, of converting, making these investments, and then how many more fields, as Councilmember Valderrama mentioned, needs to be considered, because this is going to get worse. The other part of it is, and it's just another perspective, there, my, one of my relatives had a grade point of 4.25, and that's advanced placement, so get extra credit, and many schools did not accept her because she's not well-rounded in activities. And so a lot of these international immigrants, and then when they get to second generation, and they quickly discover that activities are critical part of their resume in furthering their careers and college experience. So please make, please make this a priority, because I'm hearing so many people come to me, talk about the recreation for our kids, and somehow it feels a little bit slighted, and I just want to make sure it's got the proper emphasis, because there is conflicting different surveys, and for example, one says it's number four, and if you exclude waterfront properties and trails and passive, it becomes number three out of 12, which is pretty darn good. And so we just got to pay attention to this important issue.
Deputy Mayor Hornish, did you have another?
Yeah, I had two more questions that were late in coming, and I don't know if we have a chance. Maybe the city manager can answer one. I was asking about the per capita bump up from 16 to 17, which went up about $12 on a per capita basis. Staff was very good about getting back to me and giving me a breakdown of that. There was one in there, there was a $65,000 charge for the allocation to parks for three, four trucks, I think. Are we on a, I always forget, are we on a cash basis?
We're on a modified accrual basis, but that is, that was given to you in a cash, in cash basis.
It was, okay, so that is, that's a one-time charge.
That is one-time charge, money out the door.
Okay, so that's helpful. So it should come back down in 18, since that hopefully won't be reoccurring. The other one in that regard was, do we have an estimate for 18 on a per capita basis? I don't want to put it in the pro plan, I just kind of want to know where we're heading.
Right, so I do have those numbers for you.
Okay.
So the, we do have the per capita calculation estimated at $76.
Wow, okay.
So we do, so you were right, those were, those one-time expenditures were kind of a bump in there for 17, and they're coming down. So 2016 per capita was $72 per.
Seventy-six, okay.
And 17, we were at 84, and 18, we were estimated at about $76.
Perfect, that's much more in line with where we were versus the 17.
Exactly.
Okay, very good.
Right, exactly.
Councilmember Valderrama?
I believe we just did 64. I wanted to go back to 62, because this was, and to find a time that it might be appropriate to discuss this. If after we go through our parks plan, and we find there's going to be a bump again on the park's budget and percentage that it has on our city, do we then, at some point, want to have a discussion to say, as did Kirkland and other cities, hey, after 10%, if we're going to do this because we're being pressed to do transportation projects, want to put out a bond for the citizens to approve these extra projects? So what I'd like to see is, is there a time or a place, after we look at the CIP and that, and the implications to our budget, that we may want to come and visit that and say, is a time that it, that that is needed to be discussed, if we're going to be putting such an emphasis on transportation on the city and funds?
I would, I would think that that would be part of the budget process.
Of the budget process, and then feed the CIP into it? Into it, but then would we have to then hold approving the CIP pending that, or how does that go? That's a chicken and egg situation.
Could be a chicken and egg, but I think, I think generally, you would prioritize what CIP you would want to see there as a priority, based on council priorities, and then you would then determine how you wanted to pay for it.
Okay, then anything additional? All right, thank you.
All right, next. Oh, nope.
Yeah, but I want to clarify one thing I was just saying. The 11% is on an operating basis, right? It's not the CIP. So there's, it's two different buckets of money.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So you're asking two things. On an operating basis, if we get to a certain percentage of operation of the city's operating budget should be considered?
That's correct.
Input. But then there's the other thing about capital to do the CIP, which is a totally different issue.
That's correct.
So I would consider there might be some threshold to go back and get citizen input. I don't know where the threshold is. 11, 10, 15? I just don't know.
Yeah, Kirkland had just said 10, and I just threw it out.
It seems arbitrary to me, and I'd like to have a lot more information.
And I don't know if there is a standard or not, but it might be a time, especially when we're going to be looking at transportation funds, grabbing more of it, to have that, ready to have that discussion if we need to.
The one beauty of it with the extraordinary items in 17, that 11% may drop down to below 10, below 10%, closer to 9, I would expect.
Right, actually, item number 69, if Anjali can scroll down just a little bit here, there was a specific question about the difference between the 9 and 11% of the operating budget related to parks and recreation, and we did get a response from, the finance helped us with that, and those were kind of the one-time expenditures rolling through that budget. But also, when you think about it, though, the overall budget for the city also has a lot of different things happening to it, too. So that's also a moving bucket, if you will, that, you know, then your percentage of different, within a budget that's changing as well. So it may not be kind of the best measurement, but it is a consideration, that's for sure.
You may want to look at it essentially more as a rolling average, and look for trending there, rather than a one year to another year.
That's a good point.
I think it'd be more appropriate to do it that way.
Okay.
Good to have your financial background there.
Yes.
What's next, Angie?
Yeah, and then the only other one was number, item number 64, but I've answered that already for Deputy Mayor Hornish, so we clarified that.
Sorry.
So does anyone else have any other questions on the matrix?
Hold on.
We can't go backwards.
Not allowed. You snooze, you lose.
Going once.
Okay.
All right, I think we're good then.
Great, thank you very much for your feedback, it was very helpful. We'll bring back these changes in a red line form inside the document for you by the 27th, if not by next Tuesday as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to council for streamlining this. Does council want to take a quick break? Okay, he's already standing. We'll take a five-minute break. Okay, so now we're going to roll back to item number three on the agenda. So that was the resolution adopting council priorities for 2018. Councilmember Valderrama, did you want to speak to that? Councilmember Valderrama? Did you want to speak to item number three?
I would, thank you very much. I had pulled it off the agenda just because I thought it was an important item that had come off the retreat, and I thought it would be beneficial if staff would give the interpretation and reading of what was decided at the council retreat.
Okay, well, thank you. I'd be happy to, happy to do that. As you all know, we spent several days together at the council retreat, and the, this is essentially the consensus that staff heard from council. We determined that the particular highest areas of focus for 2018 would be transportation, environmental health and protection, community livability, and financial sustainability. Those are all very important areas of focus for us. And then within the inner circle, we also talked about the priorities of communication and engagement with our, with our community. Also, the desire to have efficient, high-performing government, have an innovative culture, as well as investing in appropriate technology where warranted. The examples underneath each one of the items, underneath, for example, transportation, these are examples of priorities that we're going to be working on this year. However, they are not all-inclusive, so there will be other items that will come forward as, as the year progresses, and we will put them and work with them under the transportation area or under environmental health and protection. So for example, in a couple areas, environmental health and protection, as well as under financial sustainability, there will also be, both of those will come to play throughout other items of discussion. So for example, financial sustainability would be something that we would look at as we discuss other items that are not of financial in nature, but they do have implications. So we would consider financial impacts as we discuss all the priorities, as well as, for example, environmental health and protection. We would consider environmental impacts throughout all the priorities and throughout all the discussions the council would have. So essentially, what we're trying to do is to have a framework to work from and help lead the discussion, and also help the citizens determine how they're being impacted, whether it be the environment, whether it be community livability, financial sustainability, et cetera. So that essentially is what we tried to capture. One of the things that we want to do is, when we finalize this, my intent is to actually blow it up and put it on the wall here, council. So as we deliberate items, we can look at, look at that from time to time, and as new items come up for council to discuss or potentially prioritize, we could look at these and say, are they included in this, or is it something that we can defer to a lower priority? So essentially, that's, that's my, I guess, presentation, for lack of a better term.
No, thank you, I appreciate that. The other one that we didn't touch about on the community livability, and it goes to the same point that you were saying, that some things like transportation transit centers and stuff could also be put under there, so they interact as we address all multiple priorities.
Absolutely, and the fact that all of these things interact together is basically the reason we have the circle there. They're all essentially connected.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion.
So moved, there's written.
Second? It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five votes, 7-0, it passes.
And I'd, I'd actually like to thank Mike Sugg and Maya. They did a great job of pulling this together for us, so thank you for all your efforts and good work.
Thank you. Okay, so next is item number 17, resolution establishing a new governance committee charter and updating existing city council committee charters for 2018.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I've asked Mike Sugg, while he's here, to assist us in this discussion. We have revised the charters of several of the existing council committees, as well as formulating an additional one. We had some, I believe we had some input on, perhaps some changes on the governance committee, for lack of a better term. So at this point, I'll turn things over to Mike, and please run us through this briefly.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council, and city manager. My name is Mike Sugg, and I am the management analyst for the city manager's office, and I'm here tonight to give you a brief overview, as Lyman mentioned, of the resolution that's in your packet tonight regarding the 2018 council committee charters. First, I want to provide a little bit of background. The committee charters were first implemented last year in 2017, and it's actually an exercise that was undertaken during the 2017 city council retreat, where an ad hoc committee was formed for the purpose of actually drafting these committees. So I believe the mayor, deputy mayor, and a staff member last year were involved in creating these charters. So the purpose of these charters is to establish a common, common understanding of the purpose, responsibilities, and limitations of each committee, and the charters also list, for example, which council members are assigned to each committee, as well as which staff serve as liaisons to the committees. So for this resolution, all we did was, we took those 2017 council committee charters, and we updated them with the latest 2018 council member appointments that were made last month at the city council retreat. We also made some other very minor amendments, so generally, they are as they were last year, just updated with the latest appointments. And you'll recall, and as the city manager mentioned, that during the 2018 retreat, the council decided to add a new committee titled the Governance Committee, and included within the resolution is a draft charter for that resolution. It's staff's understanding that the purpose of this committee is generally to review the effectiveness of local government, and to make recommendations on things such as council organization, process, rules of procedure, and other similar items. So tonight, we would love to hear your feedback, any comments, questions, concerns you have, and staff's recommendation would be to approve this resolution tonight.
Great. We'll open it up to the council for any comments that you might have.
Do you want me to have a motion first, or?
Do you have any questions specific to the governance committee, since that's a new one? The other ones were? Yep, okay. Deputy Mayor Hornish?
Yeah, on, and I think, unless there's questions that you have about the current charters for all the other committees, I want to maybe focus on the governance. Initially, I thought maybe we could add a couple of things, but then I'm looking at this again. The overall governance structure and process probably encompasses just about anything and everything, which is probably sufficient, but some of the concerns I have are how to deal with public records requests, how to deal with social media, but after thinking about this over the last few days, I'm thinking maybe the overall governance encompasses all that and leaves it broad enough that we don't have to spell out some of those things. So whoever is chair of this committee can kind of direct that, is the only thoughts I have. I think this actually drives what we, actually, I think, Councilmember Valderrama, you're the one looking for the governance committee.
That's correct.
So you may have some input as to the description of tasks. I think it needs to be read in a long, where is it? Scope of work. It talks about serving as liaison between the city and, council and staff to review the effectiveness, and that, then you have the specific tasks on the next page. But I think this works, is kind of the bottom line, but I'm open to thoughts.
The only thing that I would add to it was, I looked at that language, wondering if we, we had talked about efficiency as well as effectiveness on how meetings run, and if we want to add that in, but, I mean, you may be splitting hairs at that point.
Right now, we're running pretty efficient.
Yep, we are. And on that note, if there's no more discussion, I'd certainly entertain a motion on, on these.
Well, the chart, well, we want to split it, the charters?
I don't think we want to split it, I think we probably want to do all of them together.
Well, wait a minute, but does the resolution include the constituents on the committees?
I thought we were splitting charters from committee members.
I think we should, from the committee assignment, so. From the committee assignments. So, you may want to express your motion as moved for the resolution for 2018 committee charters.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Let me hit my button.
Thanks. Councilmember Valderrama.
Okay. So, I'm supportive of the charters, and I don't know if it's whether here or the other, and then we come back. What I would recommend, however, is, given the urgency that we are now dealing, well, let me sit back. First, we've cited as a priority that we want for our legislative priorities to address the issue of the culverts and the kokanee. We don't have that reflected in here. We currently have an urgency as to how the city and the watershed is currently dealing with the kokanee crisis with, in the last run, less than a dozen having been seen. We are currently now going to our state legislators, asking for money from them, trying to see if we can help craft their funding bills that we're going to get into here in a bit. So, I'm wondering, and I would actually move that we create another committee, which would be the Lakes of Mamish Watershed Committee, with the purpose of coordinating and working with our electeds from the watershed of Bellevue, Redmond, Issaquah, so that when we speak, then we're speaking with the voice of multiple cities and coordinating, combine our efforts with what's going on with King County. I have spoken with David St. John, who's very, who's supportive of this. He's asked me to go back to each of the city's jurisdictional coordinators to be able to see how this could work between them and the working operational groups into it. But I think that it would reemphasize the emphasis that we've stated as part of our legislative priorities. It would also give us more weight when we talk to our legislators and give us more weight by having more cities and their representatives behind us. So, that's my motion.
Mayor, just to be clear, you've got a motion on the floor that had been seconded. So, this would either be an amendment.
That's correct.
Or...
That's correct.
So, do you want to state your amendment?
So, my amendment would be to create the charter and the committee for a Lakes of Mamish Watershed Committee for our council.
I'll second that.
Okay. The amendment has been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? I'll throw my two cents in there. I'm wondering if this can't be rolled under the Legislative Committee, considering that that's an ad hoc committee instead of establishing yet another committee.
It could be initially.
Hold on, may I finish, please? Thank you. I think because the Legislative Committee is really going to have very spot touchpoints, if you will, during the course of the year, this may be something that can be rolled under this one, just a suggestion. But we've got some, Deputy Mayor Hornish?
I have the same concerns about adding another committee, because it sounds to me like RIAA eight and the Kokanee Working Group should be thinking about that. And all those entities are already part of those groups already, if I don't have a misunderstanding. And the legislature enrolled in that. So, I, in my opinion, I think we have it covered already.
Councilmember Moran.
I think that, I wanted to make sure that if this, if we do have another committee with this, that to make sure that it does roll in, I'm more concerned about it having somebody from the Kokanee Working Group on it than the legislature, because the Kokanee Working Group is working on this. I think it's a great idea from the standpoint of making sure, having all the different jurisdictions along that lake working together. From that standpoint, I think it's a great idea, because I think everybody's working out of, from within their jurisdiction, but maybe not all together. Now, whether that be coming from us starting a committee to do so, seems like a lot of work, but, I don't know. I'm game.
Mr. City Manager.
I'll just throw my two cents into this. One, I think you have a sufficient number of committees. If this is something you would like to assign to the Kokanee Work Group to work with the other jurisdictions in this capacity, I think that would be probably more appropriate at this point in time. You also have, when you do a committee structure, you also have staff considerations for liaison work and staff time that we would spend to support that. So, that is my input, but it is your prerogative as council to continue.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I was going to say, go back to the, David St. John came back and said that this would be a sort of reincarnating the old Lakes of Mamish Forum that predated RIAA eight, and his sense is that there is some more support amongst the four cities, but you'd have to be watching for the coordination and hopefully not having to pay into it. I would be supportive if this role was given de facto to the Kokanee Working Group to reach out to the others. I'd be fine, as long as this was specifically part of their charter, to reach out to the other cities of the watershed and be able to then, be able to coordinate with their elected officials, so that it's not just the operational sides that are working on, but that the electeds then can be mobilized. So, as we're starting to go for more funding here, it's not just the Mamish asking for our culverts and that, but we have Bellevue, Issaquah, and Redmond behind us. It could also be the legislative group in there, but again, it would have to be as part of that charter. So, I'm amenable to amending mine to be either one of those two, as long as it's in the charter of one of those two groups.
Why don't you go ahead and make an amendment?
No.
So, you can withdraw.
I will withdraw my amendment and move to amend to include under the charter of the Legislative Committee that we include the role of coordinating with the other members of the Lakes of Mamish Watershed for the preservation of kokanee.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion on the amendment? Ramiro, do you still have your button on, or did you want to speak?
No, I just keep it on.
I have no doubt. Councilmember Ritchie.
I'm, sorry.
No, you're up. Councilmember Ritchie, you're up.
As a member of both Legislative Committee and the RIAA eight committee, I think that makes a lot of sense to try to tie them together. And, I mean, they have a pretty detailed list of priorities that, at the state and federal level, that deal with Puget Sound Watershed, salmon habitat, and it does, I don't want to, you know, it's more to report back than having us set up our own agenda, our own priorities. I think we share a lot of priorities, as much as we share a lot of coastline. So, I think it's important to tie in what these groups are already doing, these things, and report back to the Legislative Committee and, you know, make sure our priorities are in line with theirs, and learn from them and go from there.
Okay. Councilmember Moran.
I'm a little confused where this is going.
To the legislative.
Is going to legislative, so it's not going to the Kokanee Working Group?
The amendment to the motion is that this would be charged to the Legislative Committee. It would be added to their charter.
Okay. Well, I would argue that it probably does belong with the Kokanee Working Group.
Contensus from the council. I'll amend my amendment.
Well, we can vote on it and make a new motion.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so, all those in favor?
Wait, wait, wait. I just want to clarify. We don't have the Kokanee Working Group as part of this motion.
It's not, it's not a charter. It's not one of the...
Yes, we do have a legislative, so.
Correct.
The Kokanee Working Group is a regional thing, not a, yep. So, that's why the legislative makes sense, right?
Yep. Oh, Karen and Chris, that's okay. I got you.
Okay, so, we are voting on the amendment, which is to include these Lakes of Mamish Watershed, is that about, was that?
Coordination.
Coordination, under the Legislative Committee's charter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven zero, that passes. Now, we need to vote on the main motion, which is all of the legislative charters, or, sorry, committee charters, not legislative. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, by a vote of seven zero, that passes. So, now, I need to get back to my agenda. So, the second part of that is the 2018 council committee assignments, and I do want to highlight one committee that we are shy one member of, which is Utility District Coordination Committee. We only have two members there.
Who are the two members?
Karen, and Councilmember Moran, and Councilmember Valderrama.
Do we need more?
To keep you all checked, yes.
Oh, come on, Councilmember Ross.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Somehow was lucky enough, fortunate enough, to only be named to one committee.
Ooh!
Ooh!
So, I...
You got the shirts drawn.
I, well, I'll take upon, I'll take one for the team. I volunteer myself to be around the committee.
Okay, very good. Appreciate that, Councilmember Ritchie. So, I would entertain a motion for all those committee assignments, unless there's some discussion prior to that.
I move that we approve the committee assignments.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of seven zero, the 2018 committees are set. Okay, next on our agenda is council reports. I am not going to read my report to you, since it is there. I would like to suggest that council members submit their reports in advance, so that they're here, so that we are not having to go through them at the dais, and that way there's easy reference. So, we had had that discussion last year at one point. I will highlight one thing from my report, which is the executive board meeting and the information surrounding Vision 2050. I did put the numbers in there, so we'd always heard a million people coming into the region by 2040, and they have now updated those. So, 1.8 million people is now expected, and that translates into 830,000 new households. So...
Sorry.
When we talk about transportation, it's good to have this in mind. 2.2 million jobs now, they're anticipating 3.4 million jobs in 2050 in the region. And I want to highlight that it's Puget Sound regional area, so we're not talking about King County. It's this Puget Sound regional area. I did do a little bit of a look at that, and right now, King County has 55% of the population, and of that, 30 some odd percent is in Seattle. But you can bet as we move out, there'll be more pressure on areas like ours to absorb some of that. So, I just, I highlight that because those numbers came out at that meeting for the first time. So, we will start down at the end of the table. I still have some buttons on here. I'm not sure if that's left over.
If we're going to do down the end of the table, I'll just do that.
Great. So, I will start down at the end with Councilmember Stewart. Do you have a council report?
I have a question for submitting the reports. Is there a particular format? Is there a particular timeline?
Madam City Clerk, do you want to comment on when you would like those?
Yeah, we'd really appreciate them no later than Wednesday prior to the meeting. And the way Christie does, or Ma Chao does it, is she just emails it to us in a Word doc, so. But however you want to do it is fine.
Thank you. Do you have a council report?
No, just a question, sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Ross?
I'll try to be brief. On the 24th, I attended the Kokanee Work Group, and that was really enlightening and quite a good education. Jim Bauer did an incredible job laying out the current situation. He's really tried to downplay the, what's a perceived crisis, and it's a real crisis when you look at the facts and data. Number one, in the last couple of years, we have spawners, all the way down to 19 in the most recent year. And in 2013, they had as many as 18,000 plus. But then he discounted that and said, well, let's not panic. And we've had a down cycle in the 90s and the 2007 range and recently. So, cycles happen. So, then he went on to number two, let's look at a more meaningful measure, 10-year spawning abundance, taking the average over 10 years. And it's been from just under a, over, under 1,000 to around 500 in the last decade. And that's a, now we're trending about minus 50 a year. So, in 10 years, it could be as down to zero. The third metric he looked at is recruitment rate, is how many fish replace themselves. And typically, you want to be at one, one-to-one ratio. And over time, it's been pretty close to the one ratio, some negative years, slightly, some positive. Most recently, went down as low as minus 139. And then the number, so, number four is, what is causing all this? And it's some stressors. And what's important about the fish is more than the love of the fish, the kokanee, but it's also a test of our environmental health. And he talked about the dio squeeze, dissolved oxygen isotopes. And they, it's got the heat on the surface, and you got the vegetation with oxygen, and it creates a sandwich. Eventually, they have no further survivable band. And so, what they're doing is, they ask themselves, should we intervene? Intervention, especially when you have such a low population, is very risky. But they talked about several options. One is collection of the, of the ware to produce elsewhere. That's effectively a barrier across the stream. All this takes a lot of volunteer work, because you can't leave them in the ware too long, because then they will not survive. Number two, extended rearing using the Issaquah salmon hatchery is another option. Another is a full captive broadstock program, active monitoring of the species. And then finally, cryo preservation. It's essentially reproducing their milk or semen and storing it for reuse at a later time. So, all this is just really important. The Kokanee Work Group is really spending a lot of hours with the volunteers on that team. And there's a lot of work ahead, and we are at a very, very, very risky time with our kokanee.
Councilmember Valderrama.
I also had attended for both days the Association of Washington Cities Meetings. The first day, I was joined by Chrissy, and the second day, by Pam. Out there, it was a very useful experience for not only the working and listening and being educated on, but also meeting our peer cities. Three issues jumped out at that meeting. One of them, we've already been dealing with and discussing, which deals with the crisis that we're now dealing here in our city with the kokanee and trying to address the culverts. I was able to get together with Representative Wilcox, who is sponsoring that bill, House Bill 2902, to put $50 million into the culverts. We have had some success already. As it came out of committee, they have put in a clause that gives it more flexibility into the watershed, so that they can have more discussion. It's now in appropriations. I commend the city on quickly turning around those letters, both first for the Agriculture Natural Resource Committee, and today, in about six hours, turning around the letter for the Appropriations Committee that now has it, to reemphasize our need to have it funded, and also to put a priority on the salmonoid of the kokanee. Normally, when you say salmon, the people are talking about the chinooks. And so, we want to make sure, as it now moves forward, that that also gets into the language to give us a better shot at the support as we address it. I also want to have a shout out to this N'Kualmi Tribe that submitted letters, Kokanee Work Group, Trout Unlimited, and other entities that banded to support. This is an important initiative, and we're going to be watching it now as to what happens. There are some people who want to basically pass the bill and pull funding on it, which then makes it pretty hollow. And so, hopefully, with our letters today, we'll be able to address it. The second point, we'll go to what was mentioned earlier about the population that's coming here by 2050 and the homes that are needed. And that all of you be aware, Pam was there, and Chrissy's aware, and mentioned in her report, the Senate Bill 60077, which I think was initially meant to be a shot over the bow to all the cities in the urban growth boundary. First, it was a recommitment, that they're not moving the urban growth boundary. Second, it is a slap at all the, what they called bad actor cities, that are not taking enough or slowing down their growth. There, what is surprising to me was, one, the sponsors of this bill were Senator Guy Palumbo and Senator Tacco. They're the, some of the most moderates that are in the Senate, and their initial, the point of discussion was that everything within the urban growth boundary should have a minimum of R6. There was discussions and support from PSRC, from FutureWides, from, of course, Master Builders and other, but the left and the right are coming at this and saying, someone, R12 as a minimum across all cities. Some were even making comments that you shouldn't even be worried about critical areas inside of it. When I talked to Association of Washington Cities, I met with Carl Schroeder, who was the point man for AWC, you know, while this may pass now, he said, this is not going away. And the conversations are moving more and more to start looking at this for when the next comp plans are due, because all of this would require changes to the comp plan. changes to the complant, and it behooves our staff to be watching this and what would be the implications. More and more of the discussions that I've had with legislators seem to be, the focus is, maybe we won't do this statewide, and there seems to be a growing consensus that this should be focused on Snohomish and King County. So be advised that whether it goes away now, Carl Schroeder says it's not going away. This is going to be coming back, and more people are piling on, and this is being led by moderates from Snohomish as to it. So I thought that was an interesting discussion to make sure that we have in our cognizance of what that means to us as we go forward here. There's also a House Bill 2981, which is looking to incentivize and help the local governments to create and develop more commercial office space by giving them more flexibility with taxes, and that's something that we should be watching as we look at that pillar of community development in the town center. Are there things that we can take advantage of out of that bill that seem to move very quickly out of the House? So that's another thing to consider here. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ritchie?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the King Conservation District meeting. I was chosen as an alternate through Sound Cities, but my, the person ahead of me didn't show, so I had a seat at a table. It was kind of fun. It was an education, drinking water through a fire hose. So essentially, the conversation geared towards, they have a plan, and it's, I was named to the Forestry Committee going forward, Urban Forestry, and we talked a little bit about that, and we are ahead of the game with our plan from a lot of districts that came to that meeting. So with our process as far as urban forestry is concerned, you know, food sustainability, local sourcing, air and water pollution, stormwater, those are the kind of issues that King Conservation District is going to be dealing with, and there will be a report by the end of the year, talking about these things and something that will be shared as we go forward. I also had the opportunity to attend the Regional Transportation System Initiative meeting with, I don't know, where's Steve? He's not here. So Steve and I attended the meeting. I think it was 40 different cities were represented, and the one empty chair, because Samamish sits close to SEA, Seattle, was not at the meeting, which was fun. But essentially, the conversation geared towards essentially how King County interacts with cities as far as transportation connections are concerned, unfunded mandates, and, you know, the city and state, and how those things kind of interact with the county, and how these, we have a lot of responsibilities to increase transportation alternatives, but you need to do this by this date, and good luck, here's no money, and no source nobility to gain money. So the questions were, how do we, what resources are available? What plans are there for alternative funding, alternative resources, revenues geared towards trying to pay for those city-county connections, bus routes, you know, road projects, infrastructure, that are within the city and the county working together and kind of taking the state out of it? I found that very interesting, and again, there'll be more conversations about that going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Hornish?
Okay, going in reverse order today, I substituted for Mayor Ma Chao at the North End's mayor meeting up in Shoreline. Interesting, first time I've ever been to that, to hear some of it, but the primary focus from everybody was transportation, as you would expect on the region. The one takeaway I did get was from Amy in Duval, Mayor of Duval. They are putting together their current social media, so our governance committee may think about that and talk to them what they did. I asked a couple of questions.
Talk to Amy about it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Then back on February 1st, I went, there is an EMS Task Force levy, Levy Task Force group to figure out what to propose for the ballot next year, or put in front of King County at the beginning of next year, basically. Not much there, other than economic flavor of current economy and what to kind of expect on a go-forward basis, so not, and kind of what had been the history of the levees, so that was kind of interesting. More importantly, I think, near and dear to my heart anyhow, I did go down to Olympia at the end of January to testify in front of the Finance Committee concerning, I think it's House Bill 2526, and I'm going to defer to City Manager. We'll have some more discussions on that as to what position we want to take, and I think you guys are aware of that. I highlighted it last time. Next.
Councilmember Moran?
Well, I really have nothing. I was also at the Kokoni Group. I got to see our past council members, Jared and, oh my God, who was that?
Odell.
Oh, we forget.
Who?
Out of sight, out of mind.
But I did, I do get my chuckle of the week there, because I walked in at staff in their lunchroom to try to get directions to the meeting, and they were all eating salmon.
That's not right.
Which I thought was pretty darn funny. So, but other than that, I have no report.
Great. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you very much. So I will follow up with Deputy Mayor Hornish's lead-in for me. The state legislature is contemplating a change to the levy structure and who can basically has a seat on the table. This is the first time that Samamish has been over 50,000 people. We have a seat at the table now, and there is a movement to take the requirement that 100% of the cities involved, over 50,000, basically approve the EMS levy format. The movement is to water it down and change it to only 60% are necessary to do that. There's also a change in the requirement being proposed to change it from cities as taxing authorities to defining service providers as the taxing authority. So for example, RFAs, because they are a taxing authority, they would have then a seat at the table. The way that the taxing authority is defined under this proposed legislation is that we would lose our seat at the table, and Eastside Fire and Rescue would gain a seat at the table. From my perspective, that would be inappropriate in that they don't actually levy taxes.
Exactly.
Like an RFA would. So there is a compromise option out there that is being proposed by Larry Springer that would raise the threshold, or lower the threshold from 100% and raise it from 60%, so a compromise at 75%. That may be something that we want to land on as far as supporting, but I believe that our thought, or my thought, would be that taxing authority should remain with the entity that collects the taxes as opposed to the service provider. That would include the RFAs, because they do collect taxes, but it would also include us. So I would ask the council essentially to authorize a position similar to what I just described, that we, ideally, we would like 100%, no change to the legislation, but we could probably live with a compromise of 75% with the idea that the seat would remain with the entity that actually collects the taxes. So I would ask the council for some direction.
I'm good with that.
Deputy Mayor Hornish?
A little more color on that. With a 75% threshold, it would take three cities to say no to block it versus one city with 100% requirement, because there's 11, I think there's 11.
11 entities are currently.
And one other point of color is, right now, we're the ones that have the issue as far as service that, so I think they're looking at us in Kirkland as being the sore thorns.
We would like to retain our seat at the table.
Yeah.
Which is why we'd like to keep it at 100%.
Yes.
I made a comment today at the North End Mayor's meeting in Deanna Dawson, kind of, I said, "Well, we don't have ALS," and she said, and everybody looked at me, and she goes, "Oh, no, they have it. They just don't control it or own it." And I go, "But we have it. It's in Bellevue," to try to clarify. So I mean, we have ALS services. It's just a slow, it comes from a long ways away.
That's right.
And we're hoping to get it closer as part of this, now that we're at the seat, have a seat at the table.
Could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved?
I would, I can add second.
Thank you.
The words that you used earlier.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
So, would you like us to vote on that motion?
Please.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of seven zero.
Thank you. Okay, second item is, I would like to ask council to take formal action, moving the council meeting from February 20th to February 27th. So we would cancel the 20th meeting and would then hold it on the 27th. We had some discussion of that at the retreat. There was a head nod, but we could not take formal action.
I move we move the February 20th to the February 27th.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of seven zero, we will be changing the February 20th meeting to February 27th.
Great, thank you very much. And next item is, we are trying to schedule a joint meeting with the Izakuas School District with their board, and we are having some difficulty in finding a date where all council members can attend. We've, I guess, brought it down to two potential dates, but we have some issues with one council member, I believe, at each of those not being able to attend. So March 28th would is one date, and I believe that, let's see, we have one council member that is not able to attend that date. I believe that was Councilmember Ross, and then another date, potential April 25th, and I believe Councilmember Moran cannot attend that one. So I can push it back and try to maybe do it in May, if that is direction from council. It'd be nice to have everybody there, but sometimes that's not always possible. So I'm looking for your input on our desire to meet with Izakuas School District.
I know I have travel in May, but I'm waiting for those dates to come.
I'd prefer to have the meeting sooner than later, so that we can address issues before school is out. If there's any other comments, but Deputy Mayor?
That's where I'm at, too. So given that it's one person or one person in March or April, I would suggest that we get, we push it earlier to March 28th. I think, I forgot who was missing even on that one, but, because I think it was you, right?
Okay, okay. Well, I will go ahead and schedule that.
Well, if everybody else agrees, I don't want to be the deciding.
Which date did you say I was?
March 28th.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll give your condolences, Councilmember Ross, to the group. Next item is, we have scheduled a update on the Habitat progress. If you'll, if you've driven by Habitat for Humanities Samamish, they have gone vertical now, so there are walls going up. We're pleased to see that. Gail Luxemburg, their executive director, will be here on April 17th to give us an update on progress, and wanted to let you all know that we're working on trying to schedule a build day for City Council to help and assist with actual either hammering, painting, or doing some other labor related to the project. And I will also commit senior staff to assist in that endeavor. I think it'd be a good team-building progress or aspect of that. So stay tuned for that particular date. And I'll survey council also on seeing what dates might work for that.
Great.
Let's see, the Central Washington University Board of Trustees is meeting here in Samamish on Thursday. Mayor Ma Chao and I are going to, are planning on being there to offer a welcome to them. So I sent out an email to council earlier today. If you're able to attend, you're more than welcome to do so, but please let me know ahead of time so that we can make arrangements. So ideally, if you could let me know by tomorrow at 5, that'd be great. Let's see, and then also a reminder and invitation to the Chinese New Year Festival that Central is sponsoring, along with the City of Samamish, and that will be this Saturday, February 10th, from 1 to 4. So it looks like it's going to be very good. And then lastly, just a quick update on stormwater and the code revisions. Staff has been working with the water districts on that. They've met, and they've discussed the issues and the potential MOU agreement. We're going to focus going forward on setting the rationale for the changes that are being proposed, what we need to change, and potentially why. We are experiencing problems with the current code, as you've heard from some of our citizens, and we'll try to make the necessary adjustments. So this is actually scheduled to come back to you on March 20th. We'll have another meeting with the water districts before then and have input for you at that date. So that is the end of my report, and I apologize it went long.
It's okay. We've got one question here. Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, are we going to address the new start time for study sessions?
Oh, study sessions?
Consent agenda.
Actually, you took care of that.
Okay, so next we have an executive session, and that will be relative to property acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.10.110B. We're estimating...
Medigation.
Oh, and location? How long do we think?
I would say 35 minutes.
That's it. All right, 35 minutes.
And we do anticipate...
I was already packed to go.
All right. Okay, was that five seconds long enough? Okay, I would...
Move to adjourn.
Nope, entertain a motion?
I would move, I would like to move to authorize a city manager to purchase an easement with Lancaster Ridge Open Space Track for an amount of $42,500 to be used to construct a trail from the Lower Commons to Big Rock Park.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Help with the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of seven zero, we have authorized a city manager to purchase that easement within Lancaster Ridge.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, council.